Good morning Bardstown and Nelson County, and welcome to another edition of Bradford and Brooks. Jim Brooks and Margie Bradford with you this morning. Good morning, Margie.
Good morning, Jim.
Well, we have a beautiful sunny and well unseasonably warm, I think, Wednesday morning out there for us.
Well, it's a welcome sight. I can tell you that.
Well, from the ice and snow we had at Christmas to the rain we've had recently, it's nice to see a little sunshine.
It is, but it calls to mind about the old axiom about Kentucky weather. If you don't like it, just wait about, wait 24 hours, it'll be entirely different.
Well, that's true, you know, and most people who have arthritis or rheumatism or broken bones can feel the change in the weather. And my dad used to predict rain within X number of hours, and he was usually-
Is that correct? Is that right?
Yeah, his knee was pretty accurate, too.
Oh, well. When you get older, all of your bones tell you. You don't have to have a trick knee to find that out.
Right, right. But anyway, it's a beautiful sunny Wednesday morning outside down here in downtown Bardstown.
We won't question it. We're just going to enjoy it.
Absolutely, absolutely. No need to scrape the windows this morning.
That's right.
And that's good. All right, well, Margie, you know, we're kind of getting back into a topic today that we've, we kind of strayed away from mostly because we had to do all the political interviews.
Yes. Well, we had to put off everything due to those.
That's right. Getting back towards drug addiction and resources and discussion about what's going on in the community in regard to resources to combat drug addiction, support for families and for addicts who don't want to be addicts anymore. And I will tell you, this came up yesterday. I was, I was watching the marathon fiscal court meeting, the first fiscal court meeting with the new court, new judge executive. And they went, had a lengthy court meeting, basically kind of go down department by department on kind of a status on where things were, what they were looking for, resources they need, et cetera. And at the end of the meeting, there were a list of resolutions that the court may or may not have wanted to bring up to support. And there was a discussion, an item in there that caught my eye, and it was to support or not support Narcan vending machines in the county. And I thought that was interesting because I'd seen nationally in other communities, I'd seen some discussion about Narcan vending machines as a, as a tool to prevent harm, much the same way that we have the needle exchange program. You know, that's Narcan reverses overdoses. And I don't know how many, I don't know if we could estimate the number of lives in Nelson County that have been saved with the use of Narcan. But joining me in the studio this morning, Margie and I are Betty Kelly Hart, who just happened, so eloquently spoke up yesterday at the fiscal court meeting. And I think, and I think, of course, you are very much involved in the local addiction and recovery efforts here in Nelson County. You have been for a very long time. Welcome to Bradford and Brooks, Betty.
Thank you, and I appreciate you all having me.
Well, as just a concerned citizen, and I know your passion about this, I appreciate you just speaking up yesterday during the council, or the fiscal court meeting. And I know that there really, I don't think there was much, there really wasn't, I don't think anything was really going to be decided yesterday. But I think your input, so well spoken, added that, another side of that coin.
Thank you. You know, as I explained to fiscal court, when we first started NellCare back in late 2019, and I learned about the needle exchange, I thought that was an enabling program, and certainly did not understand why we were giving out needles to people who were suffering from substance use disorder. But as the process grew, and as NellCare grew, and I learned more about it, I came to understand it. So I certainly understand anyone's reaction, the knee jerk reaction, when they first hear about a Narcan vending machine.
Right.
You know, that seems, it seems like to me that it would be a resource that would just be so helpful to, I mean, families who have people in their families that they love and see struggling with drug use, that if that was available to them, it would give them just one tool, you know, in trying to protect their loved one. I mean, it would be, you know, it would be very heartrending to see somebody that you love in the throes of addiction. And we have that all over this county.
Yes, we do. And you know, one argument, I guess, that we can receive is that Narcan is available at the pharmacies, but the pharmacies aren't open 24 hours, seven days a week. Now, when someone overdoses, you can't say, hold on, I've got to run and get a Narcan. You have to have it on hand.
Right.
But having a vending machine makes it more readily accessible. Some people might face the shame of thinking that they need to have it on hand, and they don't feel comfortable going into a pharmacy and asking for it. So the vending machine alleviates a lot of that.
Right, right.
And as you said, it's not something you have to have a prescription for.
Exactly.
Like going to a drugstore.
You know, when we first started talking about this, Jennifer Osborne with the Lincoln Trail District Health Department told me that Vine Grove had the first one in Kentucky. And they, they've been on the national news about it. But a local resident reached out to me and thanked me for pursuing this because he said he had a brother who was suffering from substance use disorder, and his brother had spent the night with him one night. And fortunately, he had Narcan on hand, and his brother overdosed. And he said, had we not caught him when we did and had Narcan on hand, he wouldn't be with us today. So I know that's not a lone case of things that people in Nelson County go through.
Tell us about NellCare.
NellCare was founded by Kenny Fogel and myself when he was president of the Bardstown Rotary Club in October of 2019. And NellCare stands for Nelson County Addiction Response Effort. And basically, it's a group, as I compare it to the Chamber of Commerce, where the members of our group are typically providers of resources for people who suffer from substance use disorder. And we meet monthly to share resources, to share information, just support each other, just a lot of different things like that. And it's been a wonderful group. We formed ourselves after learning about a group in Hamilton County, Ohio, that had done a similar thing. And so Chief Tom Sannick, at the time, came down and talked to us and kind of helped us formulate and establish ourselves.
This is a nonprofit?
We are a nonprofit. We received nonprofit status about a year ago.
All right. So what, what do you see as NellCare's mission right now? You know, no one wakes up in the morning deciding to be an addict, you know? And I think families are left with, trying to answer the question, what can I do? What do I do?
Right.
You know, and where do I turn?
And you know, there, we have, we're fortunate to have the ARC Crown Recovery Center in Springfield, Isaiah House in Chaplain, to have those two facilities so close by. You know, I had somebody contact me over the weekend who had a family member that needed help. And I'm told that, you know, once someone decides they're ready to get help, you want to move as quickly as possible before they change their mind.
Sure.
And so, you know, we were able to make some calls and do some things to help kind of expedite.
So where are these?
One is the Crown Recovery Center. It's over at St. Catherine, where St. Catherine College was in Springfield.
Okay.
Beautiful facility. I'm on their Community Engagement Outreach Committee.
Okay.
They do great things over there, have a wonderful program. Isaiah House, one of their locations is in Chaplain. They too have an outstanding program and do a lot of great things. So either one of those programs. And you know, from what I'm told, a recovery program is not one size fits all.
Right.
What works for one person, another program might be better for them. And that's one of the things I've seen through our NellCare meetings, because both of those entities are members, they'll come and share information. And what, they might have a patient who they know is their program isn't working. So they can talk with the other entity and possibly transfer.
How long, how long are they able to stay in these institutions?
I'm sure a lot of it depends on insurance, but I think both programs are at least one year long.
Okay.
Yeah. And both of them, you know-
And that's better than just a month.
Right. Both of them, you know, they have a very structured program. And when you get to a certain point, maybe six months or nine months, addiction or recovering is still your number one goal. But they start trying to do things to help you transition back into society, once you leave their program. And they also have employment opportunities where, I know that the Crown Recovery Center in Springfield has employees that work at Toys R' Tommy. And so they take them to work every day and pick them up. I think that's part time, again, because recovery is their number one job.
Excellent, excellent. The, what, maybe we need, let's backtrack a little bit, Betty. We've been talking about Narcan. For our listeners who may not be up to speed on what all these terms mean, what exactly, what would be your best definition of what Narcan is and what it means to, to an addict who overdoses or to their family?
Well, Narcan is, I compare it to the EpiPen that some people might, you know, need when they have allergies or whatever. And I've never had to use one. I've taken training on it, and I carry one with me. But it's only successful on opioids. So there are some drugs that it is not effective on, but it is effective on opioids.
Right.
And the EMS and Police Department and Fire Department have all told me, you know, sometimes they get calls on overdoses. And once they get there to respond, somebody has already had, used Narcan on that person, and, you know, they don't need to have any further help. So that's how quickly it works.
Right. And it basically reverses the effect of the opioid and reverses the overdose. Is that right?
That's what I understand, yes.
Well, that's, it's pretty amazing. And, you know, you could, you could probably come up with an estimate of the number of lives that Narcan has saved in Nelson County. Of course, you, you know, you're not, you know, there's no way to be certain, but have how many lives, but even, even if it's just one, you know, there's a whole family there who are grateful that this medicine was available, and that our first responders are trained in its use.
Absolutely. And you know, those people that suffer from substance use disorder, they're someone's daughter or son, someone's sibling, someone's parent, friend, whatever. So their lives are just as valuable as ours are.
Now, back when they were, this has been some time back, when EMS was doing first responder training with Narcan, I sat in on one of the sessions. And it was really interesting. And it's really humbling to think that, that the proper application of Narcan can really save somebody's life.
Absolutely.
And, you know, and sometimes I think that we forget kind of how fragile our existence really is. And, you know, I think, isn't fentanyl is also an opioid? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And for first responders, you know, there have been cases where first responders have, especially fentanyl, which can be so strong, that simple touch can, you can overdose by absorption, absorption through the skin.
Yeah, yeah.
Which makes it a danger to first responders.
And you know, with the needle exchange that the Lincoln Trail District Health Department does here every Thursday, about mid-year last year, I think, they started also handing out fentanyl strips, because a lot of the drugs coming in were laced with fentanyl.
Right.
And so now the people that are taking advantage of the needle exchange are also receiving fentanyl strips, and they can test their own drugs to make sure that-
Okay, what is fentanyl strip?
I have not seen one, I'll be honest with you.
So, but it detects the presence of fentanyl, is that it?
Right.
In my mind, I have it something similar to a pregnancy test. I could be wrong.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I need to get clarification from Jennifer Osborne, but yeah. So, well, last year on our stats, there were 543 needles exchanged through the Lincoln Trail District Health Department. Now, the people, the exchange is, the whole purpose is they have to bring in a dirty needle in order to get a clean needle. So that helps clean up the dirty needles in our community, because we've probably all seen them.
Right.
There were 254 Narcans distributed through those visits, and then fentanyl strips distributed were 566.
Wow.
So they're doing great work and keeping those people safe.
Trying to save lives, yes.
The fentanyl strips are useful because if you have, you don't know it, and your drug is laced with fentanyl, fentanyl is such a strong opioid, and you can wind up overdosing without intending to. So if you're, if you're aware of the presence of fentanyl, then you can be wary of, of the use of that.
And you know, the overdose calls went down when we were in COVID.
Right.
Which, when I first thought about it, you know, surprised me. And I asked one of our first responders, you know, if he had a reason or a thought as to why that was. And he said, well, I think more people were home, so less people were left alone to, you know, think about it and use drugs. And he said, but then they went up very quickly when we came out of COVID.
Right.
And it was because those people who hadn't been using for a while, it didn't take as much for them to overdose.
Right.
As we came out of COVID, because they hadn't been using as much.
Right.
And the, from what I understand, is that the drug producers are making, making a pill that looks like, say, Xanax or, or another drug that's not that strong, and putting fentanyl in it. And so that people have no idea that they're taking fentanyl.
Exactly, which is why-
And so they have, they have no resistance to it at all. They haven't built up any, you know, had built up any defenses in their body against it.
Right. Which is why the Health Department started distributing the fentanyl strips.
Let me ask you this. So the, now you were, we were talking earlier, we were talking about the, you know, where they had first started using these vending machines for Narcan. Was that instituted by the county or city, or was that an individual, a group doing it? Or how, how did that come about?
It was instituted by Sheriff of Vine Grove, Kenny Mattingly. He's now their former sheriff, but I talked with him at length yesterday. He had a relative who had a substance use disorder, and he saw the need for Narcan. So he wanted to put it outside of the Police Department-
Right.
-in Vine Grove. And so he talked with the mayor, because of course, it was a city property.
Right.
And he said, the mayor went out on a limb because, you know, she knew it could be a political issue for her down the road. But she believed in it. And so that's when they had it installed. Now, in Vine Grove, they have, like I said, right outside the Police Department, and they have a camera on it. It's not to necessarily rat anybody out or anything like that. They just wanted to have it there to see if they were getting a lot of repeat visits, or if it was, you know, a larger group of people.
One-offs.
Yeah. Now, he said his machines are different sizes. Theirs holds 118 kits, which there's two Narcans per kit. But they never filled theirs up completely. The first time they put Narcan in it, I think he said they did about 24 or so. And those were all gone within the first day, which, you know, is what made the news. But what the news didn't say was, well, the machine actually holds 118 of them.
Right.
And he said, after that first rush of people taking them, then it slowed down. And he maybe only had to refill it once a week or something. There might be two or three a day that were taken out of it.
Well, you know, to me, it just seems like a no-brainer to be able to have that available. I would never have thought of that. I mean, that's not, that's not something on your mind every day unless you're involved as you are.
Well, I-
I mean, it makes a lot of sense to me to make it available for families to have.
Right. And I had never really known a whole lot about them either. And Councilman Shekels and I went to a Kentucky League of City meeting last fall. And some, one of the mayors, I don't know if it was the mayor from Vine Grove, told Councilman Shekels about the Narcan machine. And so he asked me about it, and that's when, what opened the conversation. And my resources, my go-to person is always Jennifer Osborne. And she told me all about it, you know, and how much it costs, and how they did it, and everything they had to do, and all that. So it's a group effort.
Well, Betty, is that something that we, that's being discussed for use locally?
Yes. We have talked about it in our NellCare meetings. I was, you know, concerned about where we might put that. I did have someone step up, one of the churches that's easily accessible, to say that they would be more than happy to have it outside. It does have to be covered, and there are certain things, you know, you have to do. And then you have to take care of getting electricity to it and things like that. But he is willing to do that. And you know, as far as fiscal court goes, obviously, we don't need their blessing to do it, but we certainly want it, you know, because I think we all want to be, work together and be on the same page about things that are so serious as this.
Right. And you know, I can recall instances where it was the dedication of our first responders. For example, it was one, one cold snowy icy night, and a Bardstown City Police Officer was called to dispatch to an overdose. And he had to perform CPR while, of course, the, while the EMS unit was en route with Narcan. It couldn't travel very fast through all the ice and snow. And so that officer was there, you know, doing the, doing CPR, and basically saved that person's life until the Narcan could be administered. And, but just think, if you had that available in the home, you know, it could have, that, you know, I don't know that I could, I could do CPR for an extended length of time without wearing myself out.
Right.
But it's, it just sounds like a, an excellent resource that, that, that can serve a segment of the community that, you know, we don't want to leave out. And it's not in any shape or form, any, an enabling device.
Correct. But I do understand that reaction.
Right.
Because, again, I had the same reaction about the needle exchange. So until we, you know, all have the opportunity to educate ourselves and to learn more about it, you know, we're going to have the naysayer, so to speak. But I think we're all willing to learn together.
Is this a possibility of being brought up at, you know, in the city, a city council meeting?
We have talked about it. Yes, and I've talked about it with the mayor. And Councilman Shekels brought it up at a city council meeting. So, yes. And you know, because NellCare is our own nonprofit, we really don't have to have the permission, from what I understand, unless we're putting it in a government building. We don't want to do anything that the city or the county feels like is a bad idea. You know, we're all in this together.
Well, I just, I don't see any downsides to it myself.
Again, it's just an education thing. You know, when we look at the overdose calls, I don't have 2022 figures yet, but the Bardstown and Fire Department and Police Department and EMS made over the last, from 1919 through 2021, that was 165 calls that EMS went out on overdose calls. Now, is Narcan going to solve all of those? No. But even if they cut them a 20% or whatever, that will cut down on the calls that EMS has to make.
Do you know, do you know the number of overdoses we had in that period?
I know how many deaths we had.
Right, well, that's what I meant, deaths from overdoses.
I haven't been able to get any numbers from the coroner for 2022 yet. But in 2018, we had six deaths of, in Nelson County, of Nelson Countyans. In 2019, we had seven. In 2020, we had 16. And in 2021, I don't have the last two months, but through October of 2021, we had 15.
Wow.
So that's a lot of people that, you know, we need to help, and we need to save, and we need to help their families.
Right, right.
And those are the ones that die. That's not the ones who just overdose.
Right. I don't know, you know, how-
Passed away.
I don't know how you could ever track that, but it would be nice to be able to. And you know, one thing that Chief Mattingly in Vine Grove told me yesterday, he said, you know, is this the answer to all the problems? No, it's not. But he said he compared his overdose runs from 60 days before their Narcan machine went in, which was October the 4th of last year, to 60 days after. And the numbers dropped dramatically.
Of deaths?
No.
Of runs.
Of runs, okay.
Of runs.
I see what you're saying. People were using them.
Yes.
They had families that-
Right. And I'm sure there was at least one person, you know, through all that, if those numbers, he didn't have the exact numbers for them. I have to call the mayor to get those. But he said it definitely made a significant impact.
Excellent, excellent. Well, Betty, let's take a quick break, and we got to get some commercial messages in. All right, you're listening to Bradford and Brooks in our conversation with Bardstown City Councilwoman Betty, Betty Kelly Hart. And we're talking about NellCare and resources for addicts and their families, which, you know, sometimes I think, sometimes it's, we don't, we don't always keep those guys on, in the forefront of our minds. And, but we have, have excellent organizations in our community that, that are working to do that. All right, we'll be right back with more Bradford and Brooks in just a moment. Stay tuned. All right, you're back with Bradford and Brooks here on WBRT. Jim Brooks and Margie Bradford will be with you till the top of the hour. And our special studio guest this morning is Betty Kelly Hart, Bardstown City Councilwoman, and who's been sharing information with us about NellCare. And, and you've, you've been involved with NellCare since its beginning, is that right, Betty?
That's correct. Kenny Fogel was president of the Bardstown Rotary Club, and together we started NellCare in October of 2019.
Now, that was, that was before the COVID hit?
Right before COVID. So, you know, once COVID hit, everything went on the back burner until we started having Zoom meetings.
Right.
So we didn't accomplish a lot in 2020.
Right, right. Well, thankfully, there were, thanks for Zoom and all those other resources. We all became a little more technologically advanced as far as the way we all, we tried.
Technologically involved, anyway. I didn't make much advance in it. You know, we were talking earlier about, you know, you were talking about one-stop, one-stop center, one-stop resource center.
This is another thing that Hamilton County, Ohio, does that we've modeled ourselves after. And we finally got this off the ground last fall. And this is an event, so to speak, that we have at the library on the third Friday, Friday of every month from 1:00 to 3:00. And we have different service providers who are there to make it, the goal of it is to make it easier for people who need those services, to get information, to sign up for them, rather than having to travel all over town and, you know, meet the office hours of certain entities and things like that. And a lot of the people that come don't have cars. So it's difficult for them to get around to all these different places. So we started this, the first-
That's every-
The third Friday of every month.
Third Friday.
At the library from 1:00 to 3:00. At the library from 1:00 to 3:00. Our partners, this month, I'm glad to say that Legal Aid is finally able to join us. A lot of these people might have legal issues that they need assistance with. The Nelson County Community Clinic is there every month. The first month that we had it, all of the people that, that came in, the first table they went to was the community clinic. So, that was good to see. Peace Hospital, Diane Thompson's office, Bethany Haven, Lincoln Trail District Health Department, Crown Staffing is there for people who might need to reach out for employment. And then there's several different health insurance providers. So, it, it changes from month to month, but those are kind of our staples.
So, this is every, every Friday?
The third Friday.
The third, I mean, every third Friday?
Every third Friday.
Okay.
The first month, we had two people. The second month, we had five people. And the third month, we had 10 people. So, we were really on a roll and felt good that the word was getting out. Now, we'll say that a lot of those people were brought to us by Bethany Haven. They, their outreach person knew where a lot of their homeless, our homeless were living.
Yeah.
And so, she actually went and picked them up and brought them to us, trying to help those people.
Right.
And a lot of the vendors, you know, Mike put out peanut butter and crackers, they put out packages with a warm blanket, with a toboggan, just a lot of different things that we can provide to people. They don't necessarily have to be homeless or suffer from substance use disorder to attend this. We have one local lady who comes every month. I think she's at the library already and she just walks over to see if there's any information that might be helpful to her. So, it's growing and hopefully, maybe this year, we'll outgrow the library. But, you know, we want to be somewhere that's located in town so that people that don't have cars can access it easily.
Well, and, and the, the library makes a nice central point.
Absolutely.
I mean, you.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's just, they, as I said, they've got the parking lot there and.
And they've been very gracious.
And everybody, you know, everybody considers the library, you know, with their use of the community rooms.
Right.
And that's a real asset to the community.
It absolutely is. In November, one of our service providers was there that needed to speak with someone who was looking for services privately, you know, there's some conversations you don't want to have out in an open room. And so, the library, the next month accommodated us and gave us a smaller room to the side so that if.
Right.
Those private conversations needed to happen.
Right.
They could just shift over to the other room. So.
Right.
They're absolutely wonderful to work with. And like you said, a great service to our community.
That absolutely is. And earlier, we, we do a lot of talking in between times here when we're not on the air. We're talking about the opioid settlement that Kentucky's getting.
Right. There are several settlements that are coming down the pike. The first one that we've gotten any numbers on is one with Johnson &amp; Johnson.
Okay.
And the figures that I received from Jennifer Osborne a few weeks ago are estimates as of December the 14th. But they anticipate that over the next 15 years, Nelson County will receive $1.1 million. And it says in 2022, but we haven't received any funds yet. We were to receive $222,513. And it just progresses and kind of fluctuates over the next 15 years. Now, there's very strict guidelines and reporting guidelines that will have to be followed. But, you know, we want to make sure that those funds are used in the absolute best way they can to serve the greatest number of people, but to really make a difference. And then there's another settlement that is, the state of Kentucky is receiving $478 million. And, well, 50% of that is what's coming to Nelson County. Our portion is 1.1 million.
Four point seven.
$478 million. And I think that's also the Johnson &amp; Johnson. But of that 478 million, 50% is allotted to the cities and the counties. And the other 50% is up for grabs, so to speak, through grants. So, one thing that I've talked with Mayor Heaton at length about, and we're going to get this going in January, is to get all of the people involved, whether it be Nail Care, the city, the county, the EMS, the police, the fire, to all meet to decide the best ways to use these funds that are the most effective. And then one thing that I wanted to be careful about is with the part that's up for grabs for grants, I would rather us kind of decide collectively what grants we think would be the best to apply for. I would hate to see Nail Care apply for something and then maybe the Fire Department apply for something and EMS apply for something and only one of us gets a small portion. I just think we need to be strategic about how we ask for those funds.
Right.
I went to a seminar last fall at Kentucky League of Cities with Brian Hubbard. He's the chair and executive director of the Kentucky Opioid Abatement Advisory Commission. And he's with the Office of Attorney General. And he is the one that is in charge of that committee that will oversee those grants. And so, then he had a, he's had town hall meetings all over Kentucky last fall, and so I went to one of those. So, I'm trying to stay in front of him. He came and spoke to one of our Nail Care meetings, just so that when he hears Bardstown, he knows where, you know, what, where we are and what we're talking about.
Right.
So, I've done that. And then, the National Association of Counties named four leaders from the Kentucky Association of Counties to serve on the Opioid Solutions Leadership Network, who will oversee the effective implementation of a lot of these funds. And when I got that email yesterday and saw the list, of course, it's four judge executives from Kentucky, but one of them is Gary Moore from Boone County, and he's an old JC friend of mine. So, you know, it's nice to have those contacts.
Yeah.
I'm going to reach out to him and, you know, get him down here to talk to us as well, so.
Now, was there a website that people can go to to find out what resource is going to be available any given month at the library, you know? Because you said that Legal Aid would be there.
No, we, Nail Care does not have a website yet. And, I mean, I could, I put it out on Facebook, but sometimes I don't know until the day of.
Right.
Or even at 12:30.
Yeah.
Who might be able to be there because Legal Aid had planned to be there two months before. And then, you know, they're short staffed or somebody gets tied up in court and things like that. So, it's just kind of a, a show up and, and participate. We do give away, Nail Care gives away a $25 gift card to save a lot every month so that anybody that comes as a person who's seeking information can sign up for it. And then, we draw at the end of the meeting, at the end of function. And that's been very popular because to a lot of those people and to a lot of us, $25 that save a lot can buy a lot of groceries.
Right, exactly. But even if those agencies aren't available there, you do have information about it for the, for people and.
Well, another example is Diane Thompson. She had someone available to come the first month, but she hasn't had anyone since, but she gives me her information and we do have it out on the table. And, you know, you could just pick it up and read it.
Right.
A lot of them are looking for where do I go to get an ID, which is a question a lot of us have.
Right.
So, she has been, you know, gracious to provide that information. She would love to be there, of course, but.
Right.
It doesn't always work out.
Right. Well, it seems like that it, it takes a lot of cooperation to get this thing done.
It does. And, you know, as we, the three of us know, we have a wonderful community and we try to partner in everything we absolutely can. And we all work well together.
I mean, and now, the, with the Bethany Haven and what was the other service center like that?
Oh, that come to the nail, to the one stop?
Yeah, do they, you know, they send people too, I mean.
Right. Like I said, Bethany Haven, Kami, who is their outreach coordinator, actually has gone out and picked up people and brought them into us. And they're very grateful to be there. They're grateful to go to the community clinic's table and to learn about how they can get dental care, you know, things like that.
Yeah.
They're grateful for information about health insurance or free services, the packets that, you know, they hand out that have the gloves and the hats and the blanket warmers and all that kind of thing. You know, it's just a lot of great information and.
Well, you have to have a way of reaching these people because they're not going to be on the internet searching for.
Right.
That information and, and even if you put it out that way, how's it going to filter to them?
Right. And that was my biggest concern when we were starting this. And again, I went to Jennifer Osborne and said, you know, I can reach these service providers and get them there, but if we don't have the people there that need the services.
Right.
Right.
We're not serving our purpose. And so, Bethany Haven has been the biggest blessing in that aspect because they have helped to get the word out. And of course, you know, after we got two or three months under our belt, then the people that come tell people they know.
Right.
And so, it builds your numbers. Now, in December, we didn't have a very good turnout and I don't know why, but we just didn't. So, I'm hoping that January will pick back up.
The, well, Betty, what, what's next on, on Nail Care's list as far as finding additional resources? You know, the, I, I think the Nar can vending machine's a great idea. And, and I was doing a little research and I found that, that in some communities, it seems like being located at a police station seems to be, for whatever reason, a, a standard for, in a lot of communities. And I'm not sure exactly why, other than that's, those are usually monitored 24/7.
Right. And I think that, again, that was a knee jerk reaction from a lot of us who need education.
Yeah.
In that people say, well, nobody will ever take it if it's at a police station because they'll think they're being tracked or watched or followed or whatever. But Vine Grove has, you know, proved that it can be successful at a police station.
Right.
Yeah.
Now, Judge Executive Tim Hutchins invited you to, to be a part of, of a committee yesterday.
He did, right at the end of the.
Yeah.
For our meeting, the marathon is, is what everybody's calling it. He did, and I appreciate that opportunity. So, once he gets that going on, gladly serve in that capacity.
Well, I think any opportunity for dialogue and conversation between what the city is doing in the county is, you know, that's, that's always a step in the right direction.
And you know, this problem, the substance use disorder problem is not unique to the city.
No.
And it's not unique to the county, you know? And again, we're all in it together and we all need to put our heads together and make a dent in it.
Right.
If we can't solve it completely.
I think you can, I think you can say with a degree of certainty that practically every family in the community's been touched by this, either through their family or their friends or their acquaintances that they know.
A work, a coworker.
Right.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, you, you may be not directly involved, but it's touched every family in this, in this county.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. My, my goal for 2023, my number one goal for 2023 for Nail Care is to find the funding for us to hire a director. You know, right now, it's been the committee and myself doing all of this and there's a whole lot more that we could, we can do. But, you know, you only have so many hours in the day and I have to work my real estate job first.
Right.
And do this as time allows. I have my city council job. So, that's my number one goal. I've written a grant for it, hope to hear about it in February.
Well, that would be a good use of some of those funds that.
If it's, that's what I'm researching now.
Because somebody, somebody's got to be in charge.
Exactly, exactly. And it would be nice to have somebody.
And if it's somebody who knows what they're talking about, it makes a big difference.
And, you know, it needs to be someone who's passionate about it.
Right.
But it can work at, at least 40 hours a week, if not more.
Right.
To do those things. So, that's, that's been, that was mine and Kenny Fogel's goal from the start. It just hasn't worked out. But now that I'm seeing the availability of some funding, you know, I'm going after anything I can just to see if we can, can make that happen.
Right. All right, well, Betty, I want to thank you for taking time on short notice to come in and join us today.
Absolutely, I appreciate the opportunity, I really do.
Well, I really appreciate all the work that you and Kenny have done with Nail Care. And I think it's wonderful to see things continue to grow and move in the right direction.
Thank you.
All right, well, Margie, that's going to just about do it for this week's Bradford and Brooks. We will be back next Wednesday, of course, 11 to noon with another show. And I know we will put our heads together and get working on that.
Right.
Right after this show.
Right after, right after this show.
All right, well, thanks for listening, everybody. Have a great week and we will see you, Margie and I will see you next Wednesday here on WBRT with another Bradford and Brooks. Take care.